Well, I'd like to welcome everybody here today at our viewing audience to the November 18th meeting of the Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off and it may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Jim Reisstrafer. I'm the chairman. To my immediate left is Commissioner Bridget Carlson. To my immediate left is Tom Quinn. To my far right is Dan Darlin. And to my immediate right is Angela Leibach. Staff present is Scott Coops and Laura Berkeley. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a five-minute adjudatory board established by state law. We are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council, to serve without compensation for a five-year term. The board meets twice a month to hear appeals involving hardships from strip application of the current zoning laws. We also grant special uses and rules on administrative appeals. Are there any corrections in the minutes from our last meeting? Any corrections, anybody?
No.
Okay. Motion for approval?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Seeing no old business, now we're into the new business part. And I'm gonna read the-
Would you like to make an announcement first?
Yes, I apologize.
Thank you.
Request HV 21-06 of the Rhythm City Casino has asked to withdraw. And do we need a motion to approve that, Scott?
You can do a motion to withdraw, but it's officially been withdrawn with their- in writing, so.
Okay, that's fine. On the written writing, okay. Well, we're gonna move to item number A, request AA 21-01 of Michael Malloy on behalf of James, if I pronounce the name wrong, I apologize, Campus Copranos, okay. DBA JC Landscaping and Maintenance at 245 South Utah Avenue being an appeal of the zoning administrative interpretation dated September 24th, 2021 regarding allowed uses for the site. Property is Zone S-AG Agriculture Zoning District and previous Zone A1 Agriculture prior to January 20th of 2019. Staff, you wanna present your case?
Scott Coops, Neighborhood Services and Community Planning. So this case is before us today to, there's been a request to appeal, an interpretation that's been made. I'm gonna describe that a little bit for you because it's something that we don't typically do, but a letter dated April 26th, which was Exhibit B in your packet, was written by legal staff regarding the improper uses being conducted on the SAG property at 245 South Utah. Copranos Landscaping disagreed with the letter and requested the zoning administrator to make an official interpretation, which is Exhibit D. The zoning administrator completed a review of the letter and interpretation of the code and affirmed the position of the city's letter. JC Landscaping then filed an appeal of the interpretation, which is why we're here now
I'm sorry, Scott, is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. I'm sorry, okay.
So the board has two options. They need to confirm, either confirm the zoning administrator's interpretation of the letter, the legal letter, sent out on April 26th, or overturn that interpretation, and that's Exhibit D again. If the board confirms the zoning administrator's interpretation, illegal uses and activities on the property at 245 South Utah shall be required to cease operation and be located in a legal location, or be located in a legal location. If the board overturns the zoning administrator's interpretation, those uses would be allowed So Mr. Jim Copranos, doing business as JC Landscaping, and Mike Malloy have requested this interpretation, or requested interpretation in a letter dated May 25th, and that's kinda what started the ball rolling for this, that's Exhibit B. The letter states the operational uses have, the letter written by legal staff states that the operational uses have expanded from what was assumed to be a nursery to include tree removal and snow removal, lawn services, and dumping and filling. Snow and tree removal and lawn care business equipment and storage uses are not allowed in an A1 district. Those uses are allowed in the I1 or I2 district and could potentially be moved there if all use standards are met at that site. So on June 9th, the zoning administrator made a site visit, and these are the observations from that site visit. There's rows of trees along the north lot line, the most recent are two-year-old trees. The owner stated the trees are not raised from seedlings or saplings. Two bunkers of mulch and gravel are located on the property. Three, there are large gravel parking lot there. Four, there are commercial trailers listing, and then on these trailers are lists of services of the business. Five, large metal storage building is on-site, staff was not allowed to enter the building. Six, storage of heavy equipment was occurring, there's, for example, three bobcats were on-site. Seven, the dumping area for fill contained trees and branches. And number eight, there were no greenhouses present. So the zoning administrator's interpretation stated that use of the property would be considered a contractor shop and storage yard under previous Code M1, being the required district for that use. Two, the zoning administrator affirms that all associated uses with tree removal and snow removal are not permitted in the SAG district. Three, the zoning administrator affirms that an I1 or an I2 district are required for most of the uses occurring on this site. Staff's full interpretation is located in Exhibit D, which is the zoning administrator's I'm not gonna sit here and go through every photo, I mean, they were included in your packet, but these are photos of the site. If you notice on the north property line, there are a couple rows of trees. There's a large storage building here, a large parking area, and it looks like this is an area that's being used for fill, as long with an area back here that's burning and fill as well. And this photo is taken in 2021. So 2020, it's about the same. And this photo here is from 2011. You can see that the building isn't as large anymore, it was added on to at one spot or at one point. There, that can show that gravel area is much less than what it is now. This is before the building was built, and this is the property about a month before it was purchased by JC Landscaping. We also have some photos that were submitted by an adjacent neighbor to the staff as a comment, and these photos are here, they show a row of commercial vehicles here, storage building here, lawn service trailers, heavy tree equipment, and more parking equipment. These seem to appear to be like salt spreaders or something in the trees there, and a bunch of various other business equipment and entities. As for our staff report, our findings are that the operational uses have expanded to include storage and operation of a fleet of snow removal vehicles. Operational uses have expanded to include storage and operation of a number of tree removal and tree trimming vehicles and heavy equipment. The tree removal and trimming business of Mr. Copranos at 245 South Utah has resulted in illegal dumping, illegal fill and trash burning, as referenced in the city's cartograph tasks 193900, 1933449, 204725, 2117982, and 2152959. The petitioner has not, or does not have, the required tree trimming license for the business they're doing, and the overall observation of the use, of the activities on the property far exceed any activity would be associated with a nursery, and these uses are not ancillary to a nursery. Staff recommends that the board move to confirm the interpretation of the zoning administrator in the letter addressed to James Copranos dated September 24, 2021, identified in the staff report as Exhibit D.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I have a question, Scott. You said the zoning changed in, what, 2020?
In 2019, we had a rehaul of our zoning code, so the entire zoning code was changed. Every property in town had a new zoning district, and so the old district was called A1 Agriculture, and the new district is called S-AG Agricultural. The uses are almost identical.
That's what I was gonna ask you, so even under the old zoning codes, this would not have been permitted?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. Well, applicant, you wanna come up and present your case, and present your name, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman Reisstrafer, members of the zoning board. I am Michael Malloy. I represent James Copranos today in this appeal. We are here appealing an erroneous decision made by the city of Davenport staff on this particular property regarding its use. Now, you've seen a few pictures already, and we're gonna show you some more pictures that we have as exhibits, but first of all, I just wanna tell you folks that this is a 20-acre site that Mr. Copranos purchased back in 2004, and since that time has continuously operated his services, including a nursery where he transplants small trees to property owners in Davenport for planting, and he also has a snow removal and a tree removal business. And we're gonna show you today, folks, that this whole operation was challenged by the city of Davenport back in 2008, and it was investigated by the city of Davenport staff in 2008. Mr. Kenneth L. Strike investigated that, and he wrote a letter stating to the complainant that Mr. Copranos's operation was legal and lawful under the A1 zoning ordinance. And Jim has operated JC Landscaping Maintenance for the past 17 years in this capacity at 225 Utah. So this is kind of a redo of what the city has already decided. The newer staff here has changed their mind now because of a recent complaint after 13 years when it was approved back in 2008, and now they say that it's illegal. We're here to show you that it was legal then, it's legal now. And I wanna start out by just showing you some pictures here of exhibits we have.
Staff would just like to point out that any exhibits shown today would have to be part of the record, and you probably already know that, so.
Pardon me?
I just wanna remind you that any exhibit shown today will be made part of the record, and so they'll be kept with the city.
Yes, absolutely, we want them part of the record, sure. Starting out with Exhibit B1, this is a picture of the, I'm gonna move this up a little closer. Sure.
Mr. Malloy, you will need to sit at the podium where the microphone can pick you up.
Okay, so you're gonna have to-
Mr. Malloy, if you'd like to collapse the legs on that and put it on the table next to you at the podium, that would be something you can do.
Pardon me?
If you would like to collapse the legs on your easel and set it on the table next to the podium.
Okay, we'll try that.
Yeah, you need to be at the microphone so that it can stop.
First of all, we have a photo showing some of the Copranos real property, and in this photo, you'll see some of the young trees that are grown by Mr. Copranos on his property for sale to individual residents in the Davenport area. I wanna make clear, there's no sales taking place on this property. People don't come on the property and purchase the tree or dig up the tree. They are simply grown on the property, and the individual sees pictures of the type of tree they wish, and then these trees are transplanted by Mr. Copranos and his contractors to an individual residential property site. If you wanna turn now to Page B2, this is just another shot showing you, again, the rows of trees towards the backside of the property. There's actually five rows of trees where Jim Copranos grows the small trees, and then there are, later on, when they're purchased by someone, they are transported the young saplings from his land to the individual site. Next picture, Picture B3, this is probably a little better picture showing the actual rows in his tree nursery on his property that he has. He has approximately, I believe, five rows of trees with probably about 10 to 12 trees in each row that he is growing on-site. Now, go on to the next picture, please. Now, back in 2008, as I started to tell you folks, there was a complaint made by a woman who lived in the area, Tammy Lord, to the city of Davenport regarding Jim's nursery operation and his ancillary tree removal and snow removal business. And at that time, Mr. Kenneth L. Strike, who would be sitting here today if he was still here as a city planner, went out and inspected the property, went to the site, and looked at it. He talked to my client, Jim Copranos, about his operation, and after doing his due diligence, his research of the statute, and his physical inspection on the property, he determined that Jim Copranos's operation was legal and lawful. And what he did was, he wrote this letter dated June 12th, 2008, to Ms. Lord, telling her that he had done the inspection, and he specifically says that a landscaping business is close enough to the other listed legal uses that that particular operation is lawful and legal in this area, on this 20-acre site. This is on Utah Avenue, it's adjacent to Interstate 280 on the far west end of the city of Davenport. And he also goes on to say, "I would also expect a plant nursery type business to similarly have tractors, trucks, dump trucks, and other sorts of machinery currently that are on the property." This is the way Jim was operating, of course, back in 2008. He had that type of machinery and trucks, as you saw some of the pictures that the staff has shown you today. And Mr. L. Strike actually talked to Mr. Copranos when he was out there in June, and advised Mr. Copranos that he'd be issuing a letter to the complainant on this, and he sent Mr. Copranos a copy of this letter. Mr. Copranos, once he had this letter, he relied upon it, as any property owner has the right to do in the city of Davenport, when they receive a letter from a zoning official telling them that their operation is lawful and legal under the agricultural district ordinance. Now, you heard staff tell you that the ordinance was changed or amended in 2019, but the essential uses in this district did not change, and even if they did change, ladies and gentlemen, Jim Copranos was grandfathered in, he had a vested interest. Even if they changed the ordinance for future uses in the agricultural district, it still wouldn't be effective to someone who had been operating that way for the past 17 years at his location. As I said, there's no customers that come to Jim's property, there's no retail transactions occurring on the property, and so after this letter was sent, and Mr. L. Strike, who is the Senate as the Office of Planning Land Use, Community and Economic Development on city of Davenport official stationary, ratified Jim Copranos's business as illegal use about 13 years ago, in 2008. Jim's operation today is similar to the way it was in 2008, and now we have a 180-degree turn by the city of Davenport saying, "Oh, wait a minute, we got a new complaint. We're gonna determine that this operation is not legal now." The city has known about Jim's operation for longer than this, because we'll also show you the business licenses the city of Davenport has issued, including the current one that was issued to Jim for his operation. Now, you wanna go to the next exhibit, please? Now, the city has brought up this definition, the city tried to tell you that Jim doesn't comply with the definition under the zoning ordinance of the words nursery. Nursery means any land used to raise trees, shrubs, flowers, or other plants for sale or for transplanting. And as I've already described to you, and it's already contained in Mr. L. Strike's letter also, I believe, that the fact that he doesn't actually grow these trees from little seeds, he buys them at, when they're a small tree of somewhere between one and three foot tall, and he grows them on his property and then transports them. So the city's interpretation that this is not a nursery because he doesn't grow it from a seed is clearly erroneous. And if you look at the wording here, nursery, I think you'll see that there's nothing that says it has to be grown from a seed. Just because he doesn't have a greenhouse on the property doesn't mean he can't grow trees and sell them from his property under the definition of the zoning ordinance term nursery. Go to the next one, please. Now, the city claims that actually, that Jim has a contractor's storage yard here, and tries to use this as their argument that Jim supposedly has to be in a industrially-zoned area. I think most of you folks are pretty familiar with what an industrial-zoned area usually contains. Usually talking about factories, you're talking about places like John Deere, you're talking about Alcoa, you're talking about manufacturing places, places that, buildings that, inside the building, they manufacture a product, they're putting the product together, they have a employee conveyor line to do that, and they're actually constructing the product on-site, whatever it is, and then they're selling it to a third party off-site. Of course, this is not what Jim Copranos is doing at all. He doesn't have any kind of manufacturing operation. He doesn't put together any kind of landscaping or trees on his property that he is composing or constructing. All his trees, of course, are grown on the property. The landscaping is done off-site. You know, there's no landscaping details such as structures, such as retaining walls, brick sidewalks, that sort of thing on the property, there's none. They don't do that. What they do is they provide the service, they simply go to the site of the property owner, and they, for instance, trim their trees, or they remove their snow in the winter, or they may do some landscaping work on that person's property. There's nothing done on this property that is anywhere close to an industrial storage yard. None of that is done on-site. Would you please go to the next one, the next, actually, both of those can come down now, because they both pertain to industrial site. Now, the next couple of pictures we wanna show you is what the city did on its own back in, back in 2015. This is Utah Avenue here, and this is the entrance to the Copranos real property. Back in 2015, the city erected two 10-foot-high road signs in yellow and black stating "Business Entrance," and they did this to alert motorists on Utah Avenue that this was a business entrance on Utah Avenue, and that there might be some traffic coming in and out of that particular entrance at different times of day. And if you go on to the next page. And they not only put one of these up, ladies and gentlemen, they put two of these up, one in each direction, and of course, each one has a diamond-shaped sign, yellow with a black line showing the business entrance, and specifically stating below it, "Business Entrance." Now, these are on both sides of Jim's property on Utah Avenue that were put up by the city of Davenport, stating that we have a business entrance on Utah Avenue, which is correct. We find it hard to believe that now in 2021, they're claiming that Jim can't operate his lawful business because they claim now that it's not lawful, even after it was approved in 2008. And then these signs, of course, reinforce the whole issue by, the city's own actions are putting the signs up saying "Business Entrance." Folks, they knew about this business all along, this is no secret, it's not been hidden. They act like Jim Copranos is trying to do something nefarious here, you know, what he's doing. It's honest and open, they put up the business signs, they approved it back in 2008. So let's go to the next photo here. The next photo is the, this is the most recent business license issued, the 2021 business license issued by the city of Davenport on March 18th, 2021. on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. To J.C. Landscape and Maintenance, two forty-five South Utah Avenue, Davenport, Iowa. Jim's gotten one of these licenses every year from the City of Davenport since he's been on the property. Uh, we don't have them all going back that far, but I think this is the most recent one and most interesting one because this was issued actually on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. In April of two thousand twenty-one, all of a sudden, the city determines this is not legal. And Jim gets this letter from the city saying, uh, you're operating illegally. And nothing has changed here essentially, ladies and gentlemen, except that there was a property owner who bought property adjacent to, to Jim who didn't like the operation and made a complaint. And we believe that, again, the business license establishes that Jim has a vested interest here. Jim has a property right as a private property owner to the operation of what he's doing legally. And they can't simply yank this away from him because some adjacent property owner who bought sixty acres of farmland doesn't like what Jim does. That particular person knew what he, what, what he was buying next to when he bought it because of the business signs, because of the business licenses, and because of what he saw on the property. So, you know, what we're telling you, folks, is that, you know, a number of things here. Jim has operated lawfully and legally for the past seventeen years at the site. The city has unclean hands here because they're, they're, they've told Jim a number of things that he was legal, they give him the licenses every year, and now all of a sudden, uh, we changed our mind. We don't like it anymore. We got a complaint from somebody uh that's um, that's complaining about you again, so we're going to change our interpretation. Well, that's not how the law works, folks. Just because somebody makes a complaint against your property doesn't mean you're doing anything illegal, doesn't mean you're doing anything unlawful. And the two thousand eight letter from Mr. O'Stryke, the city business licenses, including this particular license for the year two thousand twenty-one, show that the city ratified and condoned or affirmed Jim's use. Until all of a sudden, April of two thousand twenty-one, they decide differently that they're going to take away Jim's business. Now, Jim's a small business owner in the City of Davenport. He pays taxes. He contributes a product to the city. He does tree trimming, he does snow removal in the winter on properties. By the way, he even, he even does snow removal now for the original complainant um who made the complaint in two thousand eight against him, Tammy Lord. He does actually, he does her snow removal in the winter. So she's not uh, she's not complaining anymore to my knowledge. And Jim's um, just because an adjacent property owner buys land and doesn't like Jim's operation does not mean it's illegal, folks. We're here to tell you that the board has made an erroneous zoning interpretation here that affects the livelihood of this small business. They're basically telling him that he can't operate here anymore, that he's got to close down. And we think that's illegal, arbitrary, and capricious. And we're here to ask you to overturn that decision and follow the statutes and zoning ordinances of the City of Davenport and look at these exhibits and determine that Jim is lawfully operating on the site. And um, I want to thank you for your time today. I'll conclude my remarks right now. I know um Jim wants to come up probably and say a few words to you. And there'll be other people I'm sure that may want to talk to you. And I'll just uh close by um asking you if there are any questions that you want to address to me.
Is there any board members who'd like to talk to Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, I'll ask.
Okay.
So in, in two thousand eight, I answered, in two thousand eight, um, was Jim offering snow removal and um tree trimming?
Yes, he was. And that's, that's, that's another good point I want to, I want to, I want to cover too. Um, we have, we have exhibits for you that we um, that we have um made for this hearing. Um, the first one that we're going to hand out, and I want you to hand it out to the staff too after you hand it out to the four, four board members, hand it out to the uh three staffers over there so they have a copy of what we're handing out. Um, the first one is a two thousand six um snow removal invoice that Jim sent to a particular client um for snow removal in the amount of um six hundred dollars and it's invoice number thirty-two ninety-eight. Um, it's made out to a management company, five-star management that uh controls a um, I believe it's an apartment complex here in town, Jim. Apartment complex that Jim um removed snow in the winter from. So that's the first one we want to show you. That one goes back to two thousand six. We have, we also have another one just on snow removal on a different date of December tenth, two thousand five, invoice number twenty-six oh six. This is um, this is made payable again or billed to a company called Highland Manor that owns um some rental properties in the City of Davenport that Jim uh does snow removal on in the winter. And um, this one is for um two hundred and forty dollars. Um, we also have a, we also have a, uh, which one do you have next there? What's the invoice number?
Two-six-six-six.
We also have another snow removal one to uh show you from December fourteenth, two thousand five, invoice number two-six-six-six. Made payable to the uh Home Depot Maintenance Department for one, for fifteen hundred dollars. Again, this is snow removal um for that particular company. Um, and then we also um made a um couple copies of the tree removal uh invoices. Uh, the first one we have, I believe, is invoice three-oh-seven-eight. This is one um going back to August seventeenth, two thousand six to the Coca-Cola Bottling Company in the Quad Cities, the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. This is for removal of tree and weeds at this particular property at their site. Again, we have another um, we have another invoice number twenty-nine twenty to Crystal Ridge Apartments, New Jersey Ridge Road, Davenport. You may be familiar with where that's at. This is for, again, cutting down trees. This is back on May twenty-third, two thousand six, in the amount of nineteen fifty-two seventy-five. So we're supplying these, the, the old ones to show you how far back. These, these, these are the, pretty much the earliest ones that we could find. You know, these are, these are approximately fifteen, sixteen years ago. But you'll see that um Jim was doing both snow removal and tree removal, removal from the premises back as in two thousand five, two thousand six. And then the final one, which um wasn't, the staff didn't provide you a copy of this, but we're providing you a copy of the business license, the two thousand twenty-one business license issued to J.C. Landscape and Maintenance, two forty-five South Utah Avenue, Davenport, for calendar year two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. This actually doesn't expire until March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. The date was issued was March eighteenth of two thousand twenty-one. As you can, you can see on the actual business license, those dates. So we're showing you these because we want you to understand that this has been a continuous operation. Jim didn't start the snow removal business after two thousand eight or the tree removal business. He has been doing this. And Jim will also explain to you a little bit about his conversation with Mr. O'Stryke back in June of two thousand eight where he discussed this and advised Mr. O'Stryke of the type of business that he was conducting. And um, that was, of course, um before Mr. O'Stryke actually issued his June twelfth, two thousand eight letter. So I think if you look at these um, these exhibits, uh, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, uh, you'll see that um, this isn't anything new as far as the snow removal business or the tree landscaping business. This has been conducted since the time when Jim first acquired the property in early two thousand five. Uh, any other questions you want to address to me?
I was scared. How, how would you address, the staff reports is that the the applicant does not have the required city tree trimming license and there's potentially some illegal fill dumping, trash bringing and that sort of thing on the property. How would you address that?
Well, first of all, I'll address this illegal fill issue. We're here, this, this is the zoning board. And the city has thrown this illegal fill issue, which has already been resolved by Jim up at this meeting. But this board doesn't have jurisdiction over that issue, number one. So we're not here to address that issue. It's been addressed with the appropriate um department uh in the City of Davenport through Public Works. But this is not a zoning issue, ladies and gentlemen, so I don't want to confuse the issues here. You know, they're trying to throw dirt at Jim by bringing up this um illegal fill issue, so to speak. And that has been um, that is, that is being um dealt with through the Public Safety Department and I believe has been resolved. I believe Jim is not doing any filling on the property uh anymore. He is not doing any type of um uh burn operation, as the city alluded to, on the property anymore. And, and like I said, that's not what we're here to talk to you folks about because you're not the proper board, you're not the proper authority to even deal with that. So it's um, it's, it's a, it's a uh, it's not an issue that the board should um take up and it shouldn't reflect badly on Jeff, on the zoning issue. Zoning issue is one separate distinct issue. And of course, that's why we're here to you folks, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, today to address that. On the tree trimming uh permit, um Jim maybe can address that. I'm not, I'm not aware of what this particular um uh tree trimming license they're referring to is. I'm sure if there is a requirement beyond this business license for some sort of tree trimming license, Jim will apply and get that license if necessary, if he does not already have it. Uh, so um, again, I don't think that is the focus of the hearing. The focus is on the zoning of the property and whether the use that Jim is conducting on the property is lawful under the City of Davenport zoning ordinance. Uh, any other questions?
Mr. O'Stryke?
Do you have um, in the form of percentage of, let's say, revenue, how much work, uh, we'll use two thousand eight, that's a year that keeps coming up, and today, how much of that is done in nursery business of growing trees and shrubs versus a percentage of off-site landscaping, tree trimming, tree removal, snow removal?
No, I do not have that information as far as Jim's um business information. I, I'm not sure he's, he's going to uh, he's going to uh provide, you know, confidential uh revenue information on the property.
I'm just talking about percentage, not actual dollars, just percentage.
Well, um, I'll let um, I'll let Jim try to, try to address that. I'll, I'll let him try to address that. I don't have that information. And I'm not knowledgeable about his um revenue flows on the property, that sort of thing. So I cannot address that issue. Any other questions?
Thank you for your presentation.
I got one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, just, and people don't like to answer hypotheticals, but facts aside from this case, um, because you, you keep going back to the two thousand eight letter, which I, I don't think is, is quite as strong as you presented. But um, could a company be doing something legal, a legal operation, one year and thirteen years later be doing something illegal?
Hypothetically, sure, that's possible. But I don't believe it's, it's present in this case, and that's what I want to make clear.
Understood.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You want to present your name?
Uh, Jim, J.C. Landscape, Jim Capranis. Um, my point was basically I've been there twenty years running the same business. Have, have not had any complaints until the neighbor bought the land two years ago, and that's when all the complaints started. Otherwise, I haven't had any complaints in twenty years out there, and I've been running business basically the same as I have for twenty years, so. Questions?
I'll pose the same question to you. Can you tell me percentage-wise, how much of your work is nursery work, growing of trees and shrubs on the property?
Probably thirty percent. What does that matter?
Well, I guess that gets into the question of zoning and what the use of the land is.
But I've been doing the same thing on the land for twenty years, snow plowing, mowing, landscaping.
Has it been consistently, you think, thirty, seventy, the entire time you've operated the business?
Probably close.
Roughly, yeah.
Close. I did have a complaint back in two thousand eight and uh, and now we've worked for that lady for ten years, so. She really doesn't have a problem with it anymore.
Any other questions for uh Mr. Capranis? Okay, bring it.
Can you address the licensing that the city is saying you don't have?
Uh, I've never heard of a tree trimming license. I've heard of a business license, but a uh tree removal or stump grinding license, uh, never heard of that. I can get one if that's a uh problem.
And then I have another question, if I may. Um, a, again, maybe just using percentage as a growth percentage. Um, because as, as we were shown pictures over the years of the property growing, the um lay-down, uh, equipment lay-down area, how much has the business grown or um, if we talk about a number of fleets of vehicles, like how many vehicles did you have in two thousand?
We've probably got like five more trucks now than we had back then.
Five more?
Correct.
Where, where'd you keep them then?
Same place in the yard.
Okay. Can I ask what's in the storage building?
Uh, snow plow equipment or just stuff we don't want to. We tried buy, getting buildings. I had a small building probably in two thousand eight, and I expanded to it because it looks better if you keep everything inside and not laying out everywhere. Plus it protects it, so.
So the, the trees, the rows of trees you have there are um filled dug or dig with a tree spade?
Tree spade.
Truck spade, okay.
You know, Jim, I see your trucks all the time out in the city. And, and I live in addition where I have them do my yard. And it, it comes back to when you first started in business that uh your landscaping business is probably first. Am I correct?
Uh, probably.
Okay, then, then you're, you probably got a subdivision that you did and to cut grass. And the, the people are saying, well, why don't you give us a bid on the snow plowing and shrub removal and, and fix our trees and... And, and you decided to get into the snow business, right? Am I correct?
Well, snow, snow, we might have started before mowing. They kind of go together.
Okay.
You know, the same year, six months a year, you're doing landscaping and then.
Well, we're here to consider whether to affirm or deny your, the letter on this. And it just seems to me you've got four businesses. You've got the landscaping business, you've got the snow removal business, you've got the tree trimming business, and you've got the nursery business.
Well, they all go together, kind of.
Well, they all go together. But in the summertime, you have the nursery business, you have the tree trimming business, and you have landscaping. But in the wintertime, you only have one thing, that's snow removal. And if we denied your, your snow removal, that would be fifty percent of your business. And you look for income. You wouldn't have any income if we decided to.
Well, if I could, if I could take six months off a year, I would rather do that.
Well, yeah, but some people can't.
Right.
And you've got a lot of equipment, you've got a lot of, and you need that income, that's snow removal. So it would be about fifty percent of your business then. And I don't like the fact that you're going to lose fifty percent of your business. And I'm just concerned about the letter here that we got from the city. And, and so that's my concerns with this situation. So I appreciate you coming forward and talking to us today.
I brought a, a neighbor that's lived out there for years, two couple of years.
Well, you're gonna, we're gonna get to, Bob, can I, can I talk to Jim? Is that all your comments that you want to make today?
Yep. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Are there any questions more from the board with Jim and all or Mr. Malloy? Is there anyone in the audience with, in favor of this request? Bob, you want to come up?
I, I think the city has the right to comment on, on the case.
Okay. I'm sorry, Scott, I got my order. Go ahead.
I'm Brian Hire, Assistant City Attorney. I guess it was my letter back in April that kicked this whole thing off. One of the things you've been told here by J.C. Landscaping is that back in two thousand eight, quote, previously, the city of Davenport zoning department made a determination allowing for this landscaping business on the subject property. There's more to that, end quote. Well, that's unfortunately a misleading overstatement of what that letter from two thousand eight represents. That letter was written in response to a complaint about the operation of the business at that location. That letter is a letter to the complainant explaining why the zoning department is not going to take lawful enforcement action against the property. It is not a form of zoning interpretation as it's been represented to you here today. What is relevant and noteworthy in that two thousand and eight letter is Mr. O'Stryke's observation that, quote, "If they are not growing landscaping, however, they almost certainly would begin to do so if we were to take some form of legal action." That phrase in the two thousand and eight letter indicates to you that it was very important to the person who was investigating the complaint that there be something growing on the property for it to qualify as a nursery to fit the acceptable uses under the old zoning code. Second, the provision of the zoning code that was given to you earlier that reads the Davenport City Code definition for a nursery is any land used to raise trees, shrubs, flowers, or other plants for sale or transporting, transplanting, sorry, no longer exists. As you've been told in January of two thousand and nineteen, twenty nineteen, the city of Davenport repealed the entire zoning code, which that was part of, and replaced it with a new zoning code. The new zoning code reads for that particular relevant section, which is found in seventeen point zero eight zero five zero, quote, "greenhouse slash nursery retail, an establishment where flowers, shrubbery, vegetables, trees, and other horticultural or floricultural supplies and products are propagated and sold and may include gardening and landscape supplies and products such as hardware, garden tools, utensils, paving stones, bricks, and other related items for sale." It does not deal with heavy equipment. That's not part of the definition. What you haven't heard and what Laura didn't see when she was doing her site inspection in June of this year was that there's floricultural or horticultural plants being raised and grown for sale. It's important to note that in two thousand and eight, Ken O'Stryke admits in his letter, he didn't do an inspection, he didn't go on the property, he didn't look for snow removal equipment, he didn't look for tree removal equipment, he just addressed it as a nursery. The definition that I just read to you of propagation of horticultural and floricultural supplies, products, et cetera, is compatible with S dash A G zoning, unlike a contractor's storage yard. Laura did not observe that type of activity occurring when she was there for her inspection. She was not allowed into the metal building, but that would not be suitable for growing plants anyway. I guess I'll come back to that. You've heard about the placement of the signs in the roadway. Those are nothing more than traffic control devices to warn motorists of a business driveway. Doesn't say what kind of business, doesn't authorize anything. All it does is notify motorists that there's a driveway for their safety and protection. You were provided with a copy of a business license issued by the city of Davenport to J.C. Landscaping. Take note that it's a business license for what? You didn't hear it from the podium, but it says it's a contractor class B business license. It doesn't say it's a nursery license for retail.
I would like to also add to that, that the license as described to me by the permit office is that it allows someone to be trimming trees and doing contractors-type stuff on someone else's, or not trimming trees, it allows people to be on another residential property doing contractors' stuff. It doesn't grant any rights to the subject property that you took.
I think what you can see from the pictures that are in your informational packet is that going back in time, you don't see this property as a contractor's storage yard. If you look at the most recent pictures of this property, that's what you see, is a contractor's storage yard. So this isn't about whether or not they can run a nursery business there. Nurseries are fine in S A G. This is about whether you can operate a contractor's storage yard. I guess at this point, if you want to go to my slides, that would be appreciated. You can just go to the, straight to the pictures and we'll just walk through it. So these are pictures from the J.C. Landscaping website. You see rows and rows of snow plows, contractor's storage yard, outdoor storage of equipment and materials. That's what makes it a contractor's storage yard. You can go to the next. That's a picture that I took a few days ago. Contractor's storage yard. That's not a nursery, it's not a greenhouse. Next. Similar businesses to J.C. Landscaping in Davenport. You see in the lower left, J.C.'s in an S A G. Advantage Tree Service is located in industrial, light industrial district. Superior Snow and Trucking Removal, is, is snow removal, they're in a light industrial. Naturscape, they're in a light industrial. So this is where, the pink is the I one. In the, in the lower part of that diagonal is where Advantage Tree is, in industrial zone. Next. This is Superior Snow, East Fifty-third, in the pink, light industrial. This is Naturscape on West Seventy-third, light industrial. This is Shade Master Nursery, which is out on West Ninetieth Street. It's a nursery, and it's in light industrial. To the left, in that little green sliver that you see on the left of that picture, that's S dash A G zoning. So while Shade Master Nursery is a non-conforming use in light industrial, all they'd have to do is apply for rezoning because S A G is right next door, and it would be granted. So they're a lawful non-conforming, they're located in industrial, they're right next to S A G. That's compatible with S A G zoning. A contractor's storage yard is not. So that's an aerial view of Shade Master on the left, where you can see rows and rows of plants being propagated for sale. And J.C. on the right, where you don't see that. This is an appeal of Laura Berkeley's zoning interpretation. It's not that they can't run a nursery, it's whether that operation has morphed into a contractor's storage yard, which I think the pictures demonstrate it has. J.C. Landscaping bears the burden of proving to you that Laura's interpretation is incorrect. To do that, they have to provide you with evidence that is more credible and more convincing than the evidence upon which Laura based her opinion. J.C.'s argued in their written appeal that Laura's opinion is, quote, "overly restrictive." If a zoning regulation prohibiting the operation of a contractor's storage yard in an S A G agricultural zoning district is overly restrictive, then I put to you that every zoning regulation on the books everywhere in this nation is overly restrictive. The purpose of zoning regulations is to promote and protect public health, safety, and welfare, to promote orderly development, to organize the city into zoning districts according to land use and structures, and to protect the character and maintain the stability of the districts. Common sense tells us that J.C. Landscaping's argument is contrary to those purposes. J.C. hasn't presented you with a business license that says he's in a nursery business. He hasn't presented a retail business license. He didn't even know that there was a license required for tree trimming. He's, he's operating a contractor's storage yard based on the pictures and the information in your packet, and I urge you to affirm Laura's opinion. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Could the applicant re, or try to get this area rezoned to?
That would be difficult to do because you'd be rezoning it for
Just one person.
One person for his benefit, so it would technically be spot zoning.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, now that you've allowed the city attorney to come up and present a second presentation by the city during our presentation, I'd like to respond to some of the city attorney's comments to you. Because my understanding of the rules here, Mr. Chairman, is that you ask for people who are in favor of it, and then you have people who are opposed to it. And now the city attorney has been allowed to come up during the portion of this meeting.
Hold on, for the staff, you know, the, the staff wanting to give additional information.
Yeah, well, staff, staff already gave them information.
I want to be transparent, I want to give you.
So now, now we, now we got a second staff presentation here by Assistant City Attorney Hire that tries to rebut what I presented or Jim presented and tries to add on or pile on to what the staff already said. They don't get two shots at this, they already had their presentation. I shouldn't have to be back up here, but I'm coming up because of what he just did to this hearing. I just want to make two clear points. Number one, if you look at your actual packet, ladies and gentlemen, the definition of nursery, they've got the old definition of nursery in their packet. And that's, there's a reason for that. Because that's the definition of nursery that applies to this property, not their two thousand nineteen definition. They can't change the rules of the road here in two thousand nineteen for the definition of a nursery and then re, uh, apply it retroactively to this business that's been operating this way since two thousand five. They want their cake and they want to eat it too. Which definition applies? That just shows what the city attorney read you, just shows you that they're falsely telling you that the two thousand nineteen definition, when they changed the whole zoning ordinance, applies to the Kapranis property. It does not. It clearly never did, it can't. Because you can't pass a new ordinance prospectively, retroactively apply it to an existing business. You heard the city attorney try to poo-poo the, the, the city's own traffic control signs they put up saying it's a business interest. Look at the hard evidence. It is what it is, you can look at the picture and determine for yourselves. We didn't put those signs up, the city of Davenport put it up, recognizing that it's a, a business interest. The final point is, the Assistant City Attorney tries to tell you that this is a contractor's storage yard under the definition. Well, at least he didn't try to pull off a new definition for contractor's storage yard they just passed in two thousand nineteen. And if you look at the definition of contractor's storage yard that applies to this property, it says that it applies to a area where the materials customarily used in the business are being somehow manufactured or composed on the premises and then stored. That is not what is happening here. And I'll leave it at that. I think, I think my earlier presentation covered the other issues.
Chairman, Chairman Reistroffer, may I make a quick comment, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I, I want to make a point of clarification from my site visit. The most recent set of trees that were installed earlier this summer were taller than me. So I'm five-eight. So I want to put that out there for you. When I returned to my office, I looked at the average growth rate for pine trees, which is a twelve to eighteen inches per year. So I had reason to believe that those trees are much older than I was told on site. Now, whether or not it's actually currently a nursery, I feel like does not apply. I don't feel like O'Stryke's letter is in conflict with any decisions that we have made. There was no reference to anything related to tree remover or snow removal in that two thousand and eight letter. And I, I do think that Scott Copes has a little bit more information related to those business entry signs, if you would like to hear that as well.
Scott, are we allowed to hear you again after you made your presentation?
That is your decision as a chair.
It's, it's a hearing that, that is seeking to have information brought to light. So just because they have spoken once doesn't mean that, and that we have spoken in the staff report doesn't mean that we can't give you clarifying information. We've done so in nearly every meeting that we've had, is we've come back with clarifying information at later times.
Well, I always like to let people talk, so.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I just want to state that we object to the staff trying to rebut our argument that we're making to you after they made their argument. We didn't interrupt or stop them from making their argument. And now they're trying to double team us by trying to send up the Assistant City Attorney here and throwing out questions and barbs after we made their, their own argument. If they want to make a closing argument at the end of this, they can do that. But let's have a little due process, some fundamental due process for the property owner here. This isn't a, this is a, this, you are a objective, independent, decision-making body, and you aren't tied to the city of Davenport's interpretation here. You have the right to make your own interpretation based upon the evidence here. And that's what I'm asking you to do.
I think you say one more thing, but why wouldn't?
why wouldn't the city have said something to me fifteen years ago about my operation that it's the same that it is now? The problem is, I got a new neighbor, and he doesn't like it that I'm there. Otherwise, it's not a problem.
We always seek advice from the staff. So I rely on the staff on your advice. And, um, Scott, can you make your presentation at the end of this where we can?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I understand, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but if I understand, like, in closing arguments, typically, the prosecutors make their closing argument, the defense makes their closing argument, and then the prosecutors are allowed to rebut the defense closing argument.
That's correct, but we aren't at a closing argument yet.
But.
We also are in court.
Right.
We aren't in, we aren't in a closing argument.
But I'm just starting from a perspective.
This is the evidence we're presenting you right now.
We have no issue giving him another chance to speak also and present more evidence. We're trying to give you all the, all the documentation that we have. If you would like to hear it, we are here to give you that information.
Yeah, that's, I think we're going to move on. I think that we need to hear from the audience that have been here for over an hour. And, um, so I, I guess I'd like to hear from the audience, anybody that's in favor of speaking for this, uh, and then we'll get to that.
Hi, uh, my name's Pat Finley.
Sir, this is for the portion of people that like to speak in favor.
Favor, yes.
Sorry.
In favor.
Come on up, Ken.
You want to make, we're just going to make it three minutes talking, and anything new, we'd like to hear. If you've got something old, we don't like to hear it.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Committee. Thank you for taking time to hear me. My name's Bob Tappendorf, I'm one of the Capranos' neighbors. Uh, we bought property on Utah and Highway Sixty-One back in 2005. It was a vacant lot at the time, and, uh, two acres there. We have used his services for mowing our grass, plowing our snow since then, and continue to. He's been a great business, west-end business person. It's a green business, you know, where, but talks about green in our community, or world today more so. And, uh, I have nothing but high respect for the way he operates. I use Utah Avenue daily, if not multiple times, every day, going down towards Locust Street and such. Beautiful property, as you've seen from the photos. He's got nice fencing up. At Christmas time, he'll put Christmas lights on the fence. I don't even look to, towards the west. I usually look at his property because it looks really nice. All the way through that whole corridor is beautiful. And, uh, this just takes me back to when we were going through some issues back in 2005, when we tried to start our property up there. Trees were a big issue, and we bought trees that were ten-foot tall just to appease the neighborhood and the, and the city. We were only required to buy little ones, but to rebut the tree issue here, we went to a nursery and they took the big tree spades, brought them up and planted them. And we have huge trees to this day. It was a great investment. Very happy that we did it, uh. But to have a guy like this, that's a small business guy, serves our community, has great employees, they come to our property, they, they don't even announce they're coming. We just know they're coming once a week to take care of our, our issues. They wave to us, they do their thing, and away they go, and they do a great job. We see them at the local gas stations in the morning getting coffee, fueling up their vehicles, so on and so forth. So they're spending dollars here in Davenport, Iowa, west-end in particular, which is important for everybody. And to tell a guy after fifteen years, hey, you gotta move, man, you gotta pack up and get all your stuff out of here. You're, you're a nuisance to this community because one guy bought property next to him and has a problem with the operation. This doesn't seem right, you know, it just doesn't seem fair, and, um, I just want to say, I hope you let him continue operating his business as it is.
Thank you for your comments, Bob. Anyone else in the audience in favor of this, uh, request?
Good afternoon.
You want to give?
My name is Denise, can you hear, hi. Hi, my name's Denise Gregor. My husband and I purchased, uh, Three-O-Seven South Utah in 2019, January. We moved in in October of 2018 with the full understanding that that business was operating directly next door. And that photo there, their red barn, my driveway is right behind that. So my home, my three acres, is direct relation to his property line. And what I can share is, yes, there is equipment there. It is not for us, it is not an issue, and we are there daily. There are busy moments when crews are coming in and coming out as trucks move around, absolutely. We also have a snow plow history within our family, so we understand how that business works as well. But just as the other gentleman stated, great neighbors, great west-end business for us to deal with. We have no issue with that sitting there. Okay? As a matter of fact, his yard looks better than mine. So, okay? So we, we appreciate him being there. And when we purchased our home, we knew it was there regardless of the zoning.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Well, seeing none? Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this petition?
Oh, my name's Pat Finley. I'll make it short. Um, I agree with the city's interpretation. I guess I'm one of the neighbors that's against it. Um, I purchased my property nine-twenty-nine, 2017. And, uh, one thing I just wanted to add, um, I had a survey taken, uh, two-fifteen and 2019. And when I per, back in seventeen, when I purchased the property, where they showed the picture of all the landscape stuff, there was not one tree. And I do have a photo that was taken shortly after two-fifteen, 2019 with my survey date and the date of my survey. And there's where all the trees were, and there was no landscape material on that whole area next to me. So that picture that was up there, I'd just like to add this one. There was no, there was not one tree there.
Well, do you want to present that to us?
Yes, if I could.
You know, you, we're going to have to do it for the record.
Yeah.
Okay. You want to give it to the city?
Oh, sure.
Do you need that, Mallory?
I would like you guys to see if I could, if you could compare it to that.
You could see it before we keep it for the record.
Yeah.
If you could compare it to that picture, and that's the survey date, and that's when the picture was taken. And there's my survey state. There was no material there at all.
Mr. Finley, please move back over to the podium.
Do you have a copy of it for us?
Yeah. I'll have them get you one.
I have a question for you, sir, could you come back?
Sure.
So I apologize, this might have been in your letter. Uh, so your, your complaint is that it's not a nursery?
No, well, it's, it's, it's not a nursery. I, my complaint is this, uh, commercial storage yard.
Oh, commercial storage yard, okay, thank you.
And picking up his garbage every other day before I mow. I'm not going to get into that, but, yeah, but, no, the nursery is fine, but what I'm saying, there's no, on that picture, there's no, since 2017, all the trees just have shown up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that, uh, are opposed to this request? Advocate.
There's someone walking up.
My knees are bad, you gotta give me a chance here. Chairman Reisstoffer, members of this committee, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes.
You want to give us your name, sir?
Oh, my name's John Gertis. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to present a couple of my thoughts. And then I've got a signed copy of my thoughts that I'll submit to you for later review. Please let me explain my interest in this meeting and its outcome. Although my current residence is in Clive, Iowa, I own a couple hundred acres of agricultural land on Utah Avenue, both north and south of Telegraph Road, which immediately borders the Capranos' property. I also own two family homes, farmhouses, and buildings east along Telegraph Road from Utah Avenue. I have spent well over a million dollars on the maintenance and improvement of this family farming operation over my lifetime. My family started this farming, farming this property in eighteen-sixty-three. So I have a keen, personal interest in overseeing the value of this real estate. While there are several ideas floating around concerning the zoning interpretation, I wanted to make up my own mind by observing the Capranos' operation personally. I am currently living at the sixty-six-twenty Telegraph Road property while it is being renovated to become my retirement home. So I took the opportunity to observe. Nine November, I parked on my farm ground across the street from the Capranos' business and observed the following. Sixty-six vehicles entered and/or left his property from eight to ten o'clock, consisting of cars, big pickup trucks hauling trailers of equipment, dump trucks, skid steers, wood choppers, two large bucket trucks, tanker trucks, and other equipment I couldn't identify. Two things I did not see were any plant material leaving the property or any customers coming to the property. In fact, it has a big no trespassing sign up right at the street. There were at least two skid steers staging snow plows on the property for this winter, so it is apparent that the activity will not slow down. Ten November, just to make sure the prior day was not an abnormality, I went up there and looked again, observed the same as the day before, and I found the same percentages and the same amount of traffic. There were twenty-three vehicles that simply drove back and forth betw, in front of the Capranos' property. Every other vehicle turned in. Seventy-four percent of the traffic came from the Capranos' business operation, which is three out of every four vehicles. The neighborhood has several residential properties built in the last couple of years, ranging from over, priced over six-hundred K to a million dollars. These properties have, are less than a quarter mile from my property and a half mile from the Capranos' Trucking Company. When three-quarters of the traffic on the street are heavy trucks, this real estate market will die and the property values will plummet. No one wants to send their child out to the street, the bus stop, when he's going to have commercial trucking traffic in that volume. Mr. Capranos, rightly so, is probably very proud of his business success. He's grown leaps and bounds. But this neighborhood is set up for agricultural and residential use. Parents, children, and even retirees with bad knees live here. Farmers still work the fields out here. What happens in one or two years? His business is successful now. What happens one or two years when his business grows ten, twenty, or thirty percent? The Capranos' Trucking Company needs to find an area more suitable to his needs. Finally, I ask you to make your decision about allowing this commercial trucking company to continue its operation as a present location based on the following criteria. What's best for Davenport, number one. Two, fair administration of zoning laws and admin, and administration of those laws for everyone, for everyone. Consider, and the third thing, consider what neighborhood infrastructure changes will need to be made when three-quarters of the truck traffic is his, are his vehicles. And finally, please help me and my neighbors from, set, protect us from the significant loss, both financial and aesthetic we would experience if the Capranos' Commercial Trucking Company is allowed to continue to, its operations at this location. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Questions? I'm a teacher, so you always got to have questions.
Okay.
Do I submit this then, Ms. Berkeley?
Is there anyone else in the audience opposed to this petition?
My name is Eric Kaut. I live on Utah Avenue myself. Okay, you can't hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry. I, uh, have property at Three-Twelve South Utah Avenue. I have lived on this road my entire life. I remember this place forever. And it's been a lot of things. And I remember when, uh, when Eva Harrington was selling it, and she introduced me to him at the farm sale. She always said that they were, they have a nursery here. I don't see a nursery. I guess that's, you know, and then with the dumping and stuff, and I guess that's come to an end, but that was always my concern. Why are we filling trash and, um, limbs and stuff and burying it with dirt? Mostly burying it with dirt, a lot of it blowing around. Obviously, that's been taken care of. Like I say, I, I remember when this place was an absolute pigsty, literally a pigsty, and it was addressed then. It was still ag, always has been. I don't see a nursery, I don't see ag. Everything around this area is ag. Mine's ag, John's is ag, he's been on this road longer than I have. I'd like to see it stay ag. So, that's all I have.
Any questions with the commissioners? Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Meanwhile, is else in the audience opposed to this request? I guess, seeing none? Advocate, final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We presented evidence to you to show you that Mr. Capranos has conducted a nursery and has conducted the snow removal, tree removal business since he purchased the property in 2005. We've also presented evidence to you of the city's investigation of this property back in 2008. Some of you may remember him, Kenneth O'Stryke, who has since passed away, who was the city's zoning administrator. And Mr. O'Stryke, I'm sure if he believed there was a violation here, he would have brought it to the attention of the property owner because that's the kind of planning administrator he was. And I think it's important for you to look at the June twelve, 2008 letter from Mr. O'Stryke, where he says that a landscaping business is close enough to these other listed legal uses that I would be very hesitant to take this issue to court as a zoning violation. And of course, he didn't take the issue to court. He didn't file a misdemeanor charge against Mr. Capranos because he didn't believe there was sufficient evidence or proof to show any violation by the fact that Mr. Capranos had a landscaping business. Now, you heard two of the, you heard two of the neighbors up here who support the Capranos' request. Denise Carter, Bob Tappendorf, who live in the area. Denise Carter lives very close, adjacent to the area. And they told you that Mr. Capranos is a great neighbor. They appreciate his west-end business, and they believe that his business should be allowed to continue, the nursery, the landscaping, the tree removal.
Now, you also heard a couple of objectors, Mr. Finley, who recently moved in by buying sixty acres of property in two thousand and seventeen, and Mr. Gurkis and Mr. Hout. I was a little bit confused by Mr. Finley and Mr. Gurkis claim that Jim did not have a nursery. And I think the city has already told you that Jim has a nursery operation, and we've shown you the pictures of it. So you can decide whether he has a nursery on the premises or not based upon the evidence as well as the testimony of Jim. I think this case really comes down to your common sense and fairness in this matter, to listen to both sides of the issue objectively and not be leaning toward the city as a matter of law, thinking that because they tell you something, they're correct. That doesn't make it correct, and that's why we're here. That's why we appealed this, because we think it's an incorrect ruling. You have a hard-working staff here, and generally, they're probably correct, but they make mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes, and I think they made a big mistake here on interpreting the zoning ordinance to erroneously conclude that Jim was doing something illegal here. And I ask you, in your wisdom and knowledge, to weigh the evidence and to rule or find that the two thousand and eight decision already made by the city was correct and that this decision pertaining to J.C. Landscaping should be overturned. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Copranus, I'm letting you have the opportunity, your last. Would you like to say a few words or not?
No, I was just gonna say the picture that they captured there. The picture that they captured there, normally, my property is very neat, and it'll help the real estate around there if anything. We're switching over kind of from landscaping to snow, so they must have caught us when we got everything out, you know, getting it ready to switch over. Normally, it doesn't look trashy like that.
Okay. Coming back to you, Scott, I'm giving you the final wording, if you would, to give some of your advice.
Okay, so there are a number of things that I'd like to comment on. The Copranus and his representative, Malloy, I think it's important about these signs. The signs in no way vest a legal right in that property. In fact, there was a alderman, Dunn, had complained about illegal signs being in the right-of-way. And this was in an email in October eighteen, twenty eighteen. They did confirm there was illegal signs in the right-of-way. Gary Stat went out there and asked to have the signs removed. They did not remove the signs that were in the right-of-way. So in April twenty nineteen, after, you know, a number of mecanations, then they put forth these signs that are legal in the right-of-way because apparently, the business owner was concerned about being able to access the property. So I can give you that information here for these two emails if you would like. The other thing is, the only reason we brought up the fill is it shows the adverse impact that this business is having on this property. You know, if you're running a contractor's storage yard there with snow removal and tree removal, and there's adverse impact, all those trees that are being trimmed were being dumped illegally. So that's an adverse impact that business is having. We didn't bring it up to air dirty laundry. We brought it up to prove that this site is an adverse impact on the neighborhood. And the other thing is that in the beginning, Ken never went on the property. We have not seen any evidence that there was snow removal or tree removal when the business began. They have storage out there and snow removal out there, and we have the air photos that show the expansion over time of the gravel area, which, again, gravel wasn't, the last time gravel was permitted was nineteen eighty-six. So we have them growing, and we have them having uses out there that weren't documented. They showed us licenses or receipts or invoices showing snow removal, but they don't show us any invoices regarding a nursery. So that's staff's information that we wanted to share.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a rebuttal on that?
Yeah, come on.
We would absolutely object to this.
Do you?
Yes.
Couple of points.
Mike, hold on for a minute.
We would object to this outside of the parameters that we established earlier in this meeting, where Malloy asked for us to not be able to make comments even on signage that they brought up, and now he wants to make a rebuttal to our closing argument.
Standard procedure to have rebuttal.
Mike, I agree with Mallory. You had your say, and I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any board discussion?
I have maybe.
I have one question maybe for staff. Is there anything in this packet that says what is and what is not allowed in SAG zoning? I see the purpose statements, but they're very vague, and I was trying to figure out, is a landscaping business allowed in SAG?
Right.
Or is it nursery only and that sort of thing?
Right.
What kind of things are allowed in this type of?
So Exhibit D had an attachment, and it has the use matrix for which allowed in the district.
Exhibit D. I've been through this thing a hundred times. There's so much information.
Yeah, so the letter is the zoning administrator's interpretation. She had included the documents that she used to make her determination, and that was one of the attachments to her letter. It's basically the whole zoning use matrix verbatim for what's in the code right now. So it shows you what uses are allowed in ag and what uses are allowed in other districts.
I see it now. Thank you.
Any other board discussion?
So page thirty-eight or thirty-six is about where it starts, and I apologize, we don't have page numbers because of our new NOVUS system that doesn't allow for page numbers, but that's the page number that's on.
Those like this zoning matrix.
So P is permitted, S means what?
Special uses would be required to do any of those uses. It has to come to the zoning board of adjustment for a special use if it's one of those that are letter S in yellow.
Scott, I have a question for you. If this interpretation was withheld, is there some kind of timeframe that Mr. Copranus would have to find another property to move to or?
The action would proceed through our normal process for illegal use of property and through the municipal infraction process.
Your decisions become effective once you approve your minutes, so at the next meeting. Or a reasonable amount of time. But your decision would not be the final decision today. It'd have to become effective.
Right, so what will be reasonable in your?
Thirty, sixty days?
Thirty or sixty days.
Could we make it longer, Mallory, on the board? Do we have that authority to make it longer than the thirty or sixty days? That's pretty short.
Your decision today is whether we're holding Laura's decision as the zoning.
That's the only thing we can address today.
Today, your decision is that it is sculpted at, yeah.
Okay. Any other board members have any? Well. Well, I would ask for a motion on this.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and be very specific. I will move to do the affirmative. I'll move to confirm the interpretation of the zoning administrator in the letter addressed to Mr. Copranus dated twenty-four September twenty-one and is Exhibit D in this report.
So Scott, can you give us what our alternative, if we deny, then the letter is in effect?
Chairman, there's been a motion made. Is there, we need to?
Well, I'm sorry. Excuse me, they got it. There's been a motion made. Do I got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So Scott, could you, if we uphold this, then we vote yes to uphold Laura's letter?
A yes would be to affirm the zoning interpretation.
Okay, and a no would be not to accept the letter. Am I correct?
No would be to vote against the motion.
Okay, okay. Okay. Get a roll call?
Quinn?
Yes.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Darlin? Yes. Lebock?
Yes.
And Rice Dropper?
Well, I want to be the no-no. Your motion to uphold the administrative action of the city is upheld.
Do you need a quick break before we move on? Or would you like a quick break? Laura?
No. If you got these doors, just keep walking straight. Yeah, just keep walking west. Pass the elevator, keep going.
Yeah, it's over.
Yeah, did you just walk straight down that hallway?
Yeah, make sure you don't go out down the street. That's too far.
I work for the Putnam.
What do you do?
For the museum.
Oh, my word. Way close.
I work in administration for the Putnam.
So my last name is actually changed, so I'm gonna take down the sign from Scott, who knew.
I found her old sign, but I didn't know the new one was put there.
You guys, Malloy, put the document.
Yes, sir. So I just thought I'd let you know, Mallory Bagby.
Yeah. Gosh. It's over.
You can open it now. It was closed from people earlier.
Well, I wish you would.
Huh?
You can.
No. No, no.
Well, you guys did a great job, all of you.
We're not going boating afterwards.
There you go. Okay. Well, we're here for another request. Request HV twenty-one dash zero seven of Brian Wall. Okay. On behalf of Pleasure Pools and Spas at forty-one fourteen Brady Street, for hardship variance for a certain table, seventeen dash zero five dash two design standards for the proposed C-three commercial building, including visible entrance, amount of transparent windows, and roof line variations requirements. Proposed building is to be located to the rear west of the adjacent building located at forty twenty Brady Street, being partially visible from Wilken Way. Okay. Let's see. Notes here. Can I have the staff report, please?
Scott Copes. I always want to say community planning, but it's Department of Neighborhood Services. Development of Neighborhood Services. This is why I don't say it, because I can't get it right. There's too many alphabet. You know, with those three letters, I could do it. Now that there's four, it's just, it's too many, I guess.
Could you please repeat that?
Maybe later. So we're here today, our new code, twenty nineteen, has some design standards for buildings. And one of the design standards that we're talking about today is access, pedestrian one of the design standards that we're talking about today is access, pedestrian access. And the petitioner is proposing to put a building behind kind of this other existing building here and behind their building, the rear of the property, and it's going to be used for storage of their product that they sell. And the code requires that the building be accessible to a pedestrian-oriented development, but there's no way for pedestrian to get from Welcome Way to the facility. Secondly, it's not open to the public, it's only open to employees. And so that's one of the issues that they're requesting the variance from. The other, one of the other issues is the building is slightly longer than, it's like 120, I believe, or 140 feet?
One foot.
Well, it's 120 feet long, so once you get over 100 feet long, there's some additional requirements, that the roof be varied, and that the materials on the elevation be varied, and there's, you know, windows there. Being a storage building and being not accessible to the public and being on top of a retaining wall that's over a story tall, staff has reviewed the application and has found that it meets the requirements for hardship variance. The petitioner has said that they would be able to put these little helmets on here every so often to break up the facade. We notify everybody within 200 feet that we have not had any comments one way or the other. So our findings, if I can get my, do you want to read them?
Do you want me to read them?
There, wait, I got it. I can read them. Number one, applicable application of the ordinance creating a hardship has been established. Physical and topographical conditions of the site do limit the use or the impact according to this code section. Unique circumstance has been established because it's not going to be used per what the code envisioned. And protection of essential character has been established. There are a number of other buildings that look exactly like this one that are already on the location in the area. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you for your report. Is the applicant here? Okay, you want to come up and present your case?
Yeah, my name's Brian Wall, I own Pleasure Pools and Spas, Brady. I bought the land next to us a few years ago, and we're just proposing a warehouse. It's going to clean our area up back there, along with, you know, I mean, we've got, on Brady, we're trying, everybody's trying to improve it, but on both sides of us, it's kind of messy and empty. We're just, for security reasons, more product, that's what we're looking to do. And on top of that, on that picture right now, we've got, we're actually adding on to our existing building as well. That was enough. Something for approval here, but, you know, we're adding money to the area.
Any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Is it a metal building?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, metal outside, but wood.
Wood inside.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this request? Well, seeing none. Is there any opposed to this request? Seeing none. Apron, any final comments?
Actually, I do have one question.
You also have a microphone?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Scott, that picture you sent, was that just steel going down to kind of make it?
You can make it however you want it to.
It's different colors.
Right, yep.
That was mine.
And Brian, again, if you've got any questions, Scott's always available.
Understood.
Okay. Ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve request HV 21-07.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We need a voice vote?
Roll call. Roll call. Boyd Carlson?
I approve.
Darland? Yes. Layback?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Rice Dropper?
Yes. Your variance has been approved.
Thank you.
Or your motion, I should say. Okay. Is there any other business? Well, I guess seeing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Wait, one second. We want to make sure that we can all meet one more time before the end of the year to approve the minutes for today's meeting. The next meeting would be scheduled for December 9, 2021. Are you all available that day?
Is that at 4 o'clock again?
It'd be the same, yeah. It's our, it'd be a normal meeting.
The regular scheduled time.
Yeah, I will.
It'd be the only one available in December that's set, otherwise, we can set a special meeting for it, too, in a date that's available. So we just want to make sure you guys can check your calendars and be available that day, otherwise, we can set a special meeting.
And Jim, if you wanted to participate virtually, since you'll be out of town, we can make that work for you, too.
Is it my understanding there's no, there's no business that day?
Correct.
So far. So our business would be to approve the minutes for today.
And we could move it up further away from the holiday if that's beneficial.
It's December 9.
Do you need us all here?
Uh, which is the quorum?
I can be there, I'll be there on the night.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. Scott, thank you. Laura, thank you.